I need to call things to order. I need a motion to come out of closed session.
A motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
All those, do we need a roll call?
All those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. So now we'll head down to the table and start our work session. What time? Hey, John. Pass those down to everybody when they get down there. This is Blake's replacement.
Who's first today?
She's got to sign it.
First on line.
Who's on deck?
Mike, are we ready?
Yeah.
All right. So, we were anticipating the receipt of our sales tax numbers, and we did get them early this afternoon, and it's not good news. We've, I handed out something for you here. And the thing to take a look at on this handout is the year-to-date change on the right-hand side.
Bob, can you put that on the screen?
Yes, I can. And I'll give me...
Here, take one.
Well, good luck.
You can zoom. Jennifer will come zoom for you.
This is really the area that we're talking about, here on the right-hand side. That helps a little bit. So, on the right-hand side, you can see that month by month, we're tracking our sales tax percentages. And it's the, these are the percentages that we normally report to you on a periodic basis. Started off the year fairly strong, and then we've had a few ups and downs during the course of the year. When the executive issued his budget message in the recommended budget, we were at 5.07%, which were the numbers through August at the time. And then, we received some good news seemingly in September, where our percentage jumped to 5.75%. But, we got the October numbers today, and things have headed south and in a fairly rapid fashion, down from 5.75 to 4.07%. That's about a million and a half dollars' worth of change on an annualized basis for us. We don't really have any explanation for it. When we look at our numbers, we get a listing of our top 55 retailers in the county. And at any given time, and in any given month, we have a certain number of retailers that do not report. So, they'll be on the following month's report. So, one thing we look at is, well, how many non-reports did we have last year at this time? And how many do we have now? And so, last year, we had 14 non-reports in our top 55 retailers. One of which was in our top 10. This year, we have 18 non-reports, and there are three not in the top 10. Or, three in the top 10 that didn't, in that 18. So, I don't know that that's a lot of change. You know, when you're looking at numbers, that's not going to be a tremendous amount of change by going from 14 to 18 non-reports. So, all in all, I think it's a fairly consistent profile. We've had, we've had months where we've had 20-some non-reports, and the next month, we have 10. So, there have been periods of swing. But, DOR has been more reliable this year in its reporting of sales tax. And they got their act together, I think, a little bit more with that makeup payment that we got last year, late in the year. And that's the thing that I want to address here with this handout. So, the handout, you'll see that there are blanks in the 18 versus 17. But, on the right-hand side of this sheet, you see where next month goes to 3.65%, and the following month goes to 3.33%. Those assumptions are based on us collecting the same amount of sales tax for the remainder of this year that we collected last year. Our budget presently assumes that we are going to have a 2.5% increase in sales tax over last year. So, right now, if we run flat with 2017, we're 83 hundredths of 1% better off than our assumption, which is somewhere in the area of $300,000 or so, something like that. So, not a very, not a very solid or sizable cushion on our assumptions. And there's one other issue here, and that is, the next-to-last number that you see, it's on the left-hand side, the $4,530,000 number in the 2017 actual. That's where we received that extra payment from the state of Missouri last year. And it was $900 and some thousand dollars. We know we're not getting an extra payment from Missouri Department of Revenue this year. We're going to get a regular payment. So, I expect that 3.65 and that 3.33 number actually to decrease more. And to what extent, we don't know.
I'm sorry, Bob. Say that one more time, the extra payment came in in November?
Yes, last year.
Last year.
It was about a million bucks.
Yeah. So, our assumption that this year's November is going to be as good as last year's November is not very likely.
It's a flawed assumption, I believe. So, right now, when you look at these numbers, we've got a 0.83% cushion. But, that's before we see the effect of that, having that extra payment last year and not getting that extra payment this year. And, as I said in an earlier work session, the fourth quarter is always kind of a wild card. The degree of e-commerce and how Christmas shopping actually does seems to vary from year to year.
And where people are shopping.
And where people are shopping, for sure. So, I wish I had better news. The county executive called me the Christmas Grinch today when I shared the numbers with him, but, you know...
Bob, I think you are pretty pessimistic. You know, our economy's doing well, and I'm optimistic that those numbers are going to come in a little better than that. But, that's my opinion. But, I think you tend to be more of a conservative when it comes to finances than most.
It pays at times to be conservative. But, I would caution that, in this case, I think you have to just be a realist, too. Because overcoming that 900 and almost a million dollar, I think it was $962,000 payment last year...
So, you're expecting November to come in really around 3 million?
3 million something.
Okay.
To some degree, you know, I, we have no way of knowing. That's just, we're not going to get these numbers for another month, so...
When will we actually know something more about? A month from today?
Yes. A month from today, we will, we will know.
Or tomorrow. Because they don't usually report on the first.
Well, today was the first business day of the month. And I was pleasantly surprised when Deb Salvo called and said, "Hey, we got the numbers. They're not looking real good." And then, she went through the analysis of the top 55 vendors to see who was reporting and who wasn't. And we tallied that information a little later in the afternoon. But, I am concerned. I mean, I'd love to be here a month from now and say, "You know what? Yeah, we have that additional payment to overcome from November of last year. But, we're, we held our own." And, you know, I'd love for that to be the case, but I don't know. And we're at a position where we have to adopt the budget and, under the assumptions and information that we have in hand between now and the 17th. So, we're not going to get any more, any more information from Department of Revenue at this point. Go ahead.
I looked at the numbers pretty hard, too. And rather than looking projecting into '19, I was looking at what our current budget was based on. Our current budget was based on 1.25% sales tax growth, okay? Even with your numbers, okay, even if we shoot down November some, we're still going to have over 1.25% growth. So, we're going to have extra money coming in, okay, for '18 versus what was in '18's budget. Let me just finish my train of thought here real quick, okay? I did the calculations based on extrapolating the numbers to have a little different to that. And it would justify more employee cost of living increase than what we're currently giving. Even in the budget message, we talk about we're giving 1% cost of living increase. But, on page two, it talks about Missouri Director of Revenue, their cost of living adjustment that's allowed for our tax coming in is 2.1. So, the cost of living's more like 2, and we're giving employees 1. I think we're going to end up with more money in '18 than what was budgeted, what was in the original '18 budget. And I think, based on payroll of the county for all funds is like 93 million bucks, it's going to cost $900,000 to give everybody a 1% cost of living. So, I'd like the county to consider doing that. Because if the sales tax numbers do come in higher, and we do have over a million coming in, I don't think, given our employees another $900,000 in a cost of living increase, it's actually more factual to what the cost of living increase really is. I think it's a fair thing to do for them. That's my opinion.
The 1.25% that you're talking about was the assumption that was set in the budget a year ago. Right now, we have a 2.5% in the estimated 2018 budget. So, the 1.25 has been superseded now, and all of our budget assumptions with 2.5...
We got more money in '18 than what we anticipated. We anticipated to pay the 1.25, and we're going to end up with 3.
No. Because, all of our budget now has been reset to present-day circumstances and what we know this far into 2018 in estimating what our estimate for 2018 is going to be. So, we've scrapped the 1.25%, and we're now operating with a sales tax assumption of 2.5%.
That's what Bob was going over that first night, two meetings ago, where he went over our general assumptions. We moved that 1.25 to 2.5 based on recognizing the actual revenue that was coming in. So, that's built in the base that you're seeing for '19.
So, part of that additional 1.25 to get us to 2.5 is to fund the raises that are being proposed. The 3% that's presently on the table between the 1% cost of living and the 2% merit. So, that 3%, that 3% raise costs the general fund about a million and a half dollars. So, that's, in essence, if you want to just isolate dollars for a minute in the budget, that's, that extra money that we have, that you're talking about, has gone to the raises that are presently in this budget right now.
Let me jump in here a second. Because, right now, in our, this proposed budget, we have several new hires, and it's at a million dollars, a little over a million dollars, to hire the new employees that are proposed in this budget. So, in order to achieve and get the 4% that we'd like to see for the employees, I'd say we probably need to cut those new hires in half. And that would give us the additional 500, or at least delay those hires till later in the year. So, that's a way that we can go ahead and give the employees the...
Do we have the ability, after the budget's passed, to go back on that cost of living adjustment after January, after the final numbers are in?
It would take some time. We don't close the annual budget until the end of February. So, our 2018 numbers will not be finalized until the end of February. By the time we get everything fully closed, we're talking about the middle part of March. So, at that point, we would know if we wound up with extra money in the general fund. Certifiable fund balance is the term for that. Where, we are saying in this budget that our ending fund balance is going to be X dollars at the time that that budget has passed. If, because of additional revenues to come in, if items are underspent, personnel vacancies, things like that, we wind up with a higher fund balance in March than what we budgeted in the '19 budget. The difference between that higher fund balance and what we budgeted can be appropriated. It's certifiable since it's, for appropriation, since it's been recognized higher than what was expected in that budget. But, we won't know that until March.
You don't get the final sales tax figures for the end of the year until March?
We get December and February. And we close...
They get the money from the retailers a lot for the napkins.
And then, we'll also, we'll also know what the actual lapse was. Money that people asked for, but didn't get their project done either, because it's still in progress, in which case, we need to observe the money, or they dropped the project for some reason.
You mentioned that the 3% raise is going to cost a million and five. Were you basing that off the salaries paid out generally? Because I'm looking at personnel costs for everything, and it's $93 million.
The million and a half is only the general fund.
General fund.
It's not all funds.
Okay.
Right.
So, then, if that's the case, then, just the general revenue, the general, it's not going to cost that much to go. The general fund, sales, general fund, property, I'm sorry, general fund personnel costs are about 65 million bucks.
Joe, every 1% is $485,000 in general fund for a raise.
What I'm getting at is, if sales tax revenue came in for '18 at $485,000 additional income, then we can fund that 1%, right?
But, when are you going to know that? I'm telling, I am saying, I am saying very firmly to you that I believe it would be unwise to budget any further appropriation in this budget and keep that small buffer that we have in place. Because, if you go ahead and spend any additional money out of this budget, thinking about revenues that might come along, and we don't, you're digging a hole for next year that we have to overcome before we can even think about pay raises and that sort of thing.
The one thing I hate about it, I see in the budget, all the money we're throwing in the IS and stuff like that. And we're not paying a reasonable cost of living increase to the guys that are patching the potholes and defending our families and doing all the things county employees do. Now, I got a problem with that. I'm sorry, okay?
And I do, too. And I think, before we go running out and hiring new people, we ought to take care of the employees we have. And if additional revenues come in, we could consider hiring additional employees that were requested later on in the year. So, I, and I plan to make a motion to that effect.
Well, I would like to say something here. If you're going to, if you're going to not hire any employees, you've still got to hire the police department employees because we let go all the Rangers. And so, we, it's, that's going to affect the districts like mine and Mike, that have been largely more rural, unincorporated areas because they lie on the St. Charles County Police. The representatives that represent the inner-city have county, city cops. And so, I still want to see the police department hired what they're supposed to do. And if it's somewhere else, but I mean, I don't...
We wouldn't have to cut all the new hires, just cut it in half.
I know, but it can't be any policemen.
Well, I don't have a problem with that.
I know. That's what I'm saying. But, it can't be any policemen. Because we've went over this so many times.
There was a number of years ago that we were in a similar situation. We did wait until March. And we were able to find out the numbers. And if I'm not mistaken, we were able to, I don't know, it was, it was add, we added...
It was July, wasn't it, July 1st?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's when we actually did it. But, I actually think we found the numbers in March or April when you finished up. Which is basically, I think, what we should be looking at now. And that's, to me, that's a whole lot less risky, because we will, we will know. And we can, we can make an adjustment in July rather than, than now.
Joe, just so there's no communication...
Yes. Are you talking to me?
If we go the other direction, and we have to withhold, can we withhold salary? I mean, we withhold every, we withhold operating expenses and everything. I don't remember us ever withholding salary. Can't we do that? Or, once we give it to them, is...
The control, the control on personnel costs is that you can slow down on rehires?
But, you can't, you can't. If they got four, you can't all of a sudden go to three and a half, if we're out of money.
Boy, I wouldn't think you'd want to.
No, I know we wouldn't, but I'm just, I'm going to make sure we can.
I think what you're saying, though, if these guys, gentlemen, want to get rid of half the new hires, then you would suggest that you give them the pay increase and then hire it once you get done. No, I got a different idea than that, okay? Okay, no offense. I think a lot of money thrown in IS is going through a money in a black hole. I'm sorry, that's my personal opinion. But, for instance, to give you an example, first, we're going to go on the cloud to cut employees back, and now, we hired five or six more employees back. First, we're going to have a data center in Kansas City. Now, I saw in the budget, we're getting rid of, decommission that data center, okay? The IS budget's expected to grow from 3.5 million to 4.8 million. That's $1.3 million. Cut that growth in half on IS department, keep employees in there, and then, take that half, that $650,000 you cut on IS. You didn't have to cut back that, but cut back $485,000 to give those folks a 1% raise. That's, to me, that's what I think. Because I think, an IS, until the tact, the tactology is always changing. We're adding, we're doing this, we're doing that. And I'm not seeing the bills getting down. I remember when we did the cloud, the whole thing was going to be less employees. You even mentioned that up. And now, we're back to 31. We're hiring systems engineers and all that. I don't want to see us not hire cops, but can we maybe live without another system engineer or two? I don't, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. We got, we got by with them last year without them, so... You know, the thing is, is the IS is the brains of the county. And it's just like, I don't know. We, I don't know enough to, I agree with everything you said. I just don't know enough about that, that department. And you're right, it seems very dysfunctional. It seems like there's no plan. There ever never is a plan. And I agree with everything you said. But, but all I know is, I'm not going to agree to, I'll agree to whatever you guys want to do on the employee thing, but we can't get rid of any of the cops. Because we got rid of the Rangers, and it just doesn't make any sense. It hurts the rural districts.
And I don't have a problem with that. Keep the police officers and get rid of the rest.
Well, the one thing that I want to question, though, is that, you know, these various departments have come to us and come to the administration with these additional employees and made a pretty convincing argument that they're needed. Otherwise, I don't think they would be in the budget, okay? So, you know, I'm certainly all for the, you know, trying to do the best we can for our employees with the cost of living. But, I don't believe that, that our administration would have approved these additional positions unless they were very needed. That's, that's just my thought, right off the top of my head.
And I agree with you, but, I mean, it comes down to it. I mean, let's take care of the employees we have before we go running off and hiring new people. And it seems like every year, it's whatever's left in the budget. That's what the employees get. Why don't we build that in first? What we want to give them this year, which we should have gave them last year, we didn't. Give them the 4%, then figure out the rest of the budget.
Dave, with respect, we put 3% in at the very beginning of the budget process this year. That was, that was first order of business this year, for that very reason that you're citing. That historically, it's been, well, what do we have left? And then, that becomes the pay raise. So, we said, we want a 3% that covers the cost of living increase. We knew that there are challenges with this budget from a personnel standpoint. We, we had requests for 34 new employees in the general fund. And that reduced to 15 over the course of time in scrutiny by administration and the budget team. But, remember that we had no increases to the general fund last year in FTEs. So, we're actually talking about a two-year period of time where we're adding 15 people to the general fund budget. And Terry, I think your point is well-taken because, and well-stated, that, that a lot of deliberation's gone into these positions. So, if you're not going to take the cops, are you going to tell the Department of Corrections that they're restructuring for a new world order? And to run that jail away the way that a 21st century jail should be run is not a priority. I would beg to differ. We have a new EOC. We have a facilities position there. It's, I think that speaks for itself. You're left with IS and the positions there. And if our infrastructure doesn't function, then county government just stalls and becomes dysfunctional. And we've seen some of that. So, this is the fix for that. And I think IS has made a good, good argument to the positions that it truly needs. They ask for more, but if, if, you referred to it as the brains. If, if the brain doesn't work, the county government as a whole suffers. And I don't think we can put...
What else are we adding to departments? I know, do we add somebody to finance?
No, that was a reclassification. That's Debbie Salvo's position that went from part-time to an FTE.
So, you're saying there's 15 positions. Could you break those down real quick?
Right. There's five in IS. There's two applications analysts, a security analyst, a system tech, and a project manager. Lead custodian in facilities, in corrections. There's a caseworker to supplement another caseworker that's already in place, but the population just overwhelms one caseworker. And five new correctional officer positions to increase the amount of 24/7/365 supervision in the jail. We have three positions in the police department, forensic scientist, a detective, and a firing range officer.
When you say three in the police, that doesn't count the five that's...
It doesn't. And that's what I was trying to interrupt you to say, that money comes out.
I just wanted to make sure that...
That's right.
Yes.
I got a suggestion, okay? If IS is asking for 1.3 million and five employees, okay? If we only need $485,000 to give a 1% cost of living, okay? Why don't we ding IS 485,000? Instead of getting 1.3 million, they'd get somewhere about 800,000, okay? Instead of getting five new employees, maybe get three right now, okay? And then, the other two, when the sales tax projections do come in in February, and if we're right, and you're right, and they do come in good, okay? Then, let's sign the hires of other two people. In the meantime, we at least taking care of our existing employees.
Works for me.
I think, I think, though, I think that I would say I'm agreeing with Joe and Dave. And you guys kind of know, I think maybe you can play with, can you play with the numbers before we start making motions, so we can see if you... You're saying there's no...
You can't take that kind of money out of IS and think it's going to function.
I'm not, I'm not saying I guess. That's what his idea was. I'm just saying, well, can you take a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there? Because I know Dave's solid and Joe's solid on it. I agree with... You're still getting 20% more, even with that 485 out. They're still getting more, 20% more than they had last year, and probably two or three more employees than they had last year.
You know, I just, I've been here almost as long as Joe's been here. And we've gone through the budget like this, year after year after year. And we've argued about giving employees more money, and I agree with that totally. But, my experience with the administration and what they've come up with the budget through the years has been pretty accurate. And I'm for just going with what they advise. And if we can revise it afterwards and later on after the first year, then I'm okay with that. And we'll do what we can do. But, we're hashing through this, and it's just mishmash, and I don't agree with it. I think we should go with what we got and do with what we can when we find out what we really have.
John, actually, that's not true. Every year, we have input, and every year...
Every year, we have input. I agree.
We got stuff last year that they didn't want to do, but they did it. And so, whether or not, if they didn't want to do it, or whatever the case may be, we have different perspectives. I mean, they have a perspective, we have a perspective.
I'm talking about this year. I agree with this year. I'm okay with it.
Well, that's fine, then you just...
Because, I mean, I mean, they asked for 30. 30, we gave them 15.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I think they did a great job. This has been the easiest budget we've ever worked on, I believe. I truly believe that. I mean, while we're talking...
It hasn't been for us. It's been miserable.
Yeah, it really has been. It really, truly has been.
We tore it through. And I can tell you, most of what you've talked about tonight, I've been trying to keep my mouth shut, because this is your conversation, not ours. But, I just want you to know, we've replayed this with the directors in pushing back, in telling them, there's no way you need these number of people. Anything that's in this budget, they overcame us by sheer will to make their points. Because we couldn't believe the number of people that were being asked for. But, when they come in and they can show you that they are either retaining the quality... But, when they come in, and they can show you that they are either retaining the quality, in this case, we're talking about IS, of certain programs and trying to move forward on others, and it's for the security of the government's records, or it's for these things that the departments say that they need, or that we know we need to communicate with citizens to make things easier for them, then how do you just say, well, really, I'm just, you're just not really popular with me right now, so I am not doing that? You can't do that.
Well, I get it, I understand. I don't have to agree with, you know.
My sales tax goes to hell, and.
And that's fine, we could do that, but the problem is, for raises, we need ongoing money. So, if we delay it a few months, and then we hire those folks, we still have to make all the raises we've given people.
But, John, where were we? We did all this stuff, all this, this studies, and this and that, spent all this money, and then we're getting our people back up to, hell, we can't even hold anybody at IS, because we don't pay them enough, so we're going to not continue. But my point is, are we, when we don't do what we're supposed to do, we don't follow through when we're supposed to follow through, and it's not by choice, it's just because that's the way it is, I get it, but aren't we just going backwards again, putting ourselves back in that same hole?
But we are following through, we've been consistent with giving.
But, but aren't we supposed to? We did that study, and this is where you're supposed to be for this.
So, we did not move the grid last year, because the advice we were getting was, is that our beginning pay was still above market. It's when we had people three, four years, five years, that we started to lose ground.
And that's why we only have a 1% cost of living adjustment this year, to move that grid just 1%, because we still, from all the data that we have, is showing that we are still at or better than market. So, that's why the 1% of this raise is a cost of living.
And that's a fact, you have information.
It's the fact from the salaries information group that we're buying from, and I can tell you something else, which is, we just acquired an HR director who will lead this skillfully. You know, we waited to not hire somebody who was substandard for the position, and we finally found somebody who we really feel can lead this. So, I think you will see even better numbers from us in the future.
We didn't hire that person.
Bob, did you ever check?
Yeah, she's right there.
She's right there.
Oh, the new person, yeah. We've been hiring so many people, I'm sorry. Who is that person, I'm sorry.
We got to break up this meeting, we got to.
Yeah, we're 10 minutes.
The meeting continues next time.